So, welcome everyone to the May 17th, 2023 regular meeting of the San Francisco Elections Commission. I am President Robin Stone. The time is now 6:07 PM. And I call the meeting to order. Before we proceed further, I would like to ask Commission Secretary Marissa Davis to briefly explain some procedures for participating in today's meeting.
Checking microphone?
Yes. Okay, you can proceed. Thank you.
When joining by phone, you will hear a beep, and when you are connected to the meeting, you will be automatically muted in listening mode only. To make a public comment, dial star three to raise your hand, and when your item of interest comes up, you will be added to the public comment line. You will hear, "You have raised your hand to ask a question." Please wait until the host calls on you. The line will be silent as you wait your turn to speak. If at any time you change your mind and wish to withdraw yourself from public comment, press star three again. You will hear the system say, "You have lowered your hand." When joining by WebEx or a web browser, make sure the participant side panel is showing by clicking on the participants icon. At the bottom of the list of attendees is a small button or icon that looks like a hand. Press the hand icon to raise your hand. You will be unmuted when it is time for you to comment. When you are done with your comment, click the hand icon again to lower your hand. In addition to participating in real time, interested persons are encouraged to participate in this meeting by submitting public comment in writing by 12:00 PM on the day of the meetings at elections commission@sfgov.org. It will be shared with the Commission after this meeting has been concluded, and we will include as a part of the official meeting file. Thank you, President Stone.
Thank you, Secretary Davis. Again, this meeting is starting at 6:10 PM. Secretary Davis, will you please proceed with item number one, Commission roll call?
Commissioners, please verbally state your presence at today's meeting after your name is called. President Stone.
Present.
Vice President Giordano.
Here.
Commissioner Bernhols. Commissioner Bernhols?
Commissioner Bernhols has an excused absence.
Thank you. Commissioner Dai.
Here.
Commissioner Hayden Crowley.
Here.
Commissioner Livalsi.
Here.
Commissioner Parker.
Commissioner Parker will be late but joining us momentarily.
Thank you. President Stone, with the members present and accounted for, you have your forum.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for your patience with these technical difficulties. At some point, we will get it sorted. So, I appreciate everyone holding off on that. And before we move on to the next item, Commissioner Dai has graciously agreed to state the Elections Commission's land acknowledgement resolution.
Thank you, President Stone. The San Francisco Elections Commission acknowledges that we are on the unceded ancestral and working on their traditional homeland. We wish to pay our respects by acknowledging the ancestors and relatives of the Ramaitush community and affirming their sovereign rights as first peoples.
Thank you, Commissioner Dai. That closes Agenda Item Number One. Now, we will move to Agenda Item Number Two, General Public Comment. Public comment on any issue within the Elections Commission's general jurisdiction that is not covered by another item on this agenda. Secretary Davis, are there any public commenters?
There are no public commenters.
Great, we'll give everyone a... Okay, we will move to Agenda Item Number Three, or close out Agenda Item Number Two and move to Agenda Item Number Three, Approval of Previous Meeting Minutes. Discussion and Possible Action on Previous Elections Commission Meeting Minutes. Specifically, we'll be talking about the April 19th, 2023 draft minutes. And as just a quick reminder, before I open it up for the Commission discussion, we don't need to take a full vote on any edits that are suggested. It's just a general consensus. So, are there any comments? Commissioner Dai?
Yes, just one correction and a couple clarifications. On page three, there's a word missing in the second full paragraph. VP Giordano moved to adopt the draft slides and authorized President Stone to make appropriate, relevant word changes.
Ah, I believe that was... Sorry, I'll let you complete.
All right, and then a couple of clarifications on page five for the Redistricting Process Initiative. I wanted to address one of the attachments. So, I proposed a sentence, after... This would be in paragraph three. After the first sentence about AB 1248, add a sentence, Commissioner Giordano suggested that we defer action on the draft letter to the Board of Supervisors requesting their support for AB 1248 until the DCA's complete their legal memo on the same. And I have this in track changes. I'll be happy to send it to Marissa afterwards. And then, the next sentence, I wanted to clarify that the vote, the decision not to vote in March 15th was for a Commission Committee, not the advisory panel that we were proposing. So, I would propose changing... The Elections Commission opted not to vote to establish a Commission Committee in the March 15th regular meeting. And then, a final sentence at the end of the paragraph. Commissioner Dai clarified that the proposed Good Government Panel was an alternative approach to address previous concerns about limited Commissioner resources and would only include herself and Commissioner Livalsi. And I will send it to you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Dai. Does anyone else have specific comments? This is President Stone. I don't agree with a couple of the clarifications, specifically surrounding the quote-unquote "Commission Committee", which I believe we'll be discussing later this afternoon. The Commission specifically voted not to form any sort of group panel committee, whatever we call it. And so, I'm happy to agree to adding the word "Commission Committee", but it doesn't change that the Commission did not vote to form any sort of body. And we can table that discussion until... Like, we can revisit those meeting minutes if we'd like after Agenda Item Number Seven. But I don't agree that that was what had happened. And I also don't agree with the final sentence about the Good Government Panel. I've rewatched that discussion at least three times, and I don't agree with that. So, I'm happy to provide alternative suggestions after reviewing Commissioner Dai's feedback and provide my own kind of wordsmithing in response, and that we can then discuss at the next regular meeting, which I believe is in June. And then, just to clarify the word choice on page three, I had a feeling this might cause some confusion. I actually used the words, though I know I am a stickler about not being a transcript, I used the words "appropriate" rather than "appropriate". And I had a feeling... In fact, when I reread the minutes, I was confused myself. So, I'm happy to change it. The language that was used was to have President Stone appropriate changes, "the" changes or something to that effect. I can't... I, for some reason, can't pull up the exact line. But I'm also happy to change it. So, I just wanted to clarify why that was in there, but I don't mind making that change. So, if everyone is comfortable with that, and Commissioner Dai, if no one else has comments, we can also come back to you for a response. But I will provide... I'll review your proposed changes. I will provide my response to those, and then we can revisit it in June. Does that work? Let's wait to see if other folks have comments. Okay, Commissioner Dai?
Yeah, so my only concern is that I may not be in attendance in June, so... Which... You know, we can discuss beforehand, that's fine. I'm happy to email it to you and Marissa right now.
Yeah, so, my apologies, Commissioner Dai. I had just... That had just... I was not intending to do it while you weren't here. I just completely forgot that you had mentioned that. So, we can also discuss it in July. I don't think it's pressing, unless you have strong feelings. Okay, so, we will postpone it until July, when Commissioner Dai can participate in the discussion. Just making a note. DCA Flores, were you going to say something else? Okay. Great. Any other comments pertaining to the approval of the previous meeting minutes? Okay, let's move to public comment, then.
I don't see any hands for public comment.
Great. Thank you, Secretary Davis. And thank you, Commissioner Dai, for your feedback. That will close Agenda Item Number Three, and we will move to Agenda Item Four, the Director's Report. Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the May 2023 Director's Report. I will... With that, I will hand it over to Director Ernst.
Thank you, President Stone. I'll take questions. I'll just... One item that I'll provide some more information on is we did meet with the Mayor's Office on the budget, and there will be more cuts to the department's draft budget that the Commission reviewed previously. And likely, the cuts will be around the grant fund monies to community groups to assist with the March and November 2024 elections. I don't know the final numbers yet, but it'll be a significant reduction in the grant monies. The monies that will be allocated to the department, at least through the Mayor's Office, in March will be intended for the outreach around crossover voting, so people who are nonpartisan voters, whose affiliation is nonpartisan. They... Some political parties allow the nonpartisan affiliated voters to cross over, to vote for the contest president of the parties. And usually, it's the Democratic, I can't think of the Libertarian, American Independent, and there's one more, Peace and Freedom. The Republicans and Greens do not, usually. So, the outreach will be around that topic for March, and that's where the grant funds will be allocated, I think, from the Mayor's Office through a discussion. And then, for November, the grant monies will be towards noncitizen voting for the Board of Education contest in the November 2024 election, primarily. Then, of course, we have the ranked choice voting as well. And then, we did, with the assistance of the City Attorney's Office, prepare trailing legislation to submit with the budget, that the mayor will submit with its budget to the Board. And that would be on AB 1614. That's the legislation where the proponent and opponents for local... State measures, for sure, but for the local measures, counties can opt out. So, this trailing legislation that we've, with the assistance of the City Attorney's Office, will submit to the Board in conjunction with the budget. We'll seek for the Board to pass an ordinance that would... What's the word? Remove San Francisco from having to print proponent and opponents on the ballots, which would actually increase the length of the cards by probably a card per election, which is just, the cards alone is like another $500,000. And so, part of our budget cut will be the trailing legislation to remove potentially an extra card per election as we go forward. And I think for the rest, I can just take your questions on the Director's Report.
Thank you, Director Ernst. I'll open it up for Commission discussion. Yes, Vice President Giordano.
Okay, thank you, Director Ernst, for your report. I just have a couple of questions regarding what you just said with respect to the proponents and opponents. Was that just for the local ones that you'd seek removal from the ballot? Or were you also going to request the state to... in the legislation?
So, for the legislation requires the state measures to have the proponents and opponents still listed on the ballots, but allows counties to opt out of that requirement for local measure.
For local.
Right, so the trailing legislation is seeking the Board's vote to allow San Francisco to opt out of printing proponent and opponent names on the ballots for local measures.
Okay, and then, my other question was, in the past, we've sort of discussed the idea that some of that information is in the Voter Information Guide, the Voter Information pamphlet that would normally be printed on the ballot.
Correct.
Yeah, is that the case? Like, all of the information that would have been printed on the ballot will be in the Voter Information Guide in the format that would be put on the ballot normally?
No, the format on the ballot would be limited to 125 characters, and I think it expands to 135 for other languages. But, so, in the Voter Information pamphlet, you've got the official proponent and opponent arguments, and also the paid arguments. So, at the bottom of each argument is a listing of the authors, and also, within the arguments, there's a listing of the supporters of the measure or argument. So, it's not the same format.
Yeah, I guess what I mean is, like, if the ballot requires, like, the top three or something, I don't know what it is, but would that... You know, that condensed form be visible from the Voter Information pamphlet, too?
So, the proponents... The names of the proponents and opponents will still be presented in the Voter Information pamphlet, but they won't be truncated. There will be no abbreviated names or organizations. There'll be the full names, organizations. So, it's actually a better listing of information in relation to the local ballot measures than what would be printed on the ballots.
Okay, all right, thanks. And then, my last question was around the website. It's kind of two related questions, but... One is... Well, they're both around the archiving of the older site. And I know you said you're looking at alternatives to the archive tool. And one of those was to keep the old site live in a read-only format. Is that... Do you know how long they're going to keep it live for?
No, we... And yeah, I don't... It hasn't happened yet. So, right now, I think only ArchiveIt is the archive for our old site. I'm not aware of it. I was actually transitioning to having the read-only format yet. And I don't know... I don't know... No, I don't know. I can't give you any timeframes on that right now.
Okay, so, what are the other options you're considering aside from ArchiveIt? Any?
Well, so essentially, make the old site read-only, and essentially, it would live in SF Elections. And then, the links would... See, the thing is, the links would go potentially to the new site from the read-only. And if we are... And then, the links would also go to the ArchiveIt site if it was not... If the information was not on our current site. So, it'd sort of be a gateway to the old and new sites.
Okay, and that's just something you're exploring right now?
Yeah.
All right, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Giordano. Commissioner Dai?
Yeah, so, in the meeting with the Mayor's Office, you said it was mostly going to hit the grants and then working on this printing savings. The other thing you mentioned in your report was staff salaries was the other proposed area for cutting. So, is that going to be a...
Oh, the attrition.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, there's no salaries themselves are not being discussed for any kind of reductions or cuts at all. Is the... So, in the city, even when departments have authority to hire into positions, come budget cycles, if there's not someone already in those approved positions, they become potentially attrited, and they become attritioned. They're called attrition savings. So, even though departments have the permission, they've gone through all the steps to have authorizations to hire someone into the positions to save money, the city will not allocate funds for those positions in the next fiscal year. And those are called attrition savings. So, we will have attrition savings for this next fiscal year. And we had some discussions with the Mayor's Office on a couple of positions. We had a couple of retirements that occurred in the department. And so, those positions became vacant right at the time that the Mayor's Office were looking at our budget. And the Mayor's Office thought that those could be attrited classifications or positions in our budget. But we've had that discussion with the Mayor's Office, that those positions will not be part of attrition savings. We can find savings from other positions. And also, since in the city, when a position becomes open towards the end of a budget cycle, the funding usually isn't a full year's funding. It's like a three-quarter or half, depending on the timing of the hiring cycle. So, we'll probably have three-quarter funding for those two positions where two people retired the last few months. So, I don't expect there to be any real hit to the department as far as positions are concerned for attrition savings.
Good, so, I just wanted to make sure you had the staff that you needed, so... Great, and then, of course, I was pleased to see the results of some of the preliminary results from the Go Green campaign. I was curious, for the thousand or twenty or so who responded to the campaign, do you have any idea what was the most effective message?
The email.
Your channel?
Yeah, the email was the... We had the most responses on that mass email we sent to those. And we have email addresses for around 50% of voters. We don't have email addresses for all the voters.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dai. Anyone have? This is President Stone. I had a couple of things that I wanted to say or ask. It was an interesting question that Commissioner Dai brought up about the most effective message, because I was actually really impressed, even though maybe a thousand voters doesn't seem like a lot. I think a thousand voters in a month is a pretty big number for folks who've stopped the postal delivery of their voter information packet. So, pretty cool. The... I did have one question about the grant funding. So, and apologies, I... This may have been my misunderstanding. So, does that mean that there will be a reallocation of grant funding? Or is that separate from the one that you speak about in the... For formerly incarcerated folks in the Director's Report? How do those two things relate to each other?
They're separate.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay. That was... That makes sense. And then, this is a question that is unrelated to... It's not unrelated, but a question I have, just because it's been a kind of national concern recently. I just wanted to understand if the department is using the Electronic Registration Information Center, Eric?
Eric, no, we don't. And that is... So, there is legislation, I think, in Sacramento that's... I don't know where it is in the process, but for California to join, Eric. But in California, the information of record comes from the Secretary of State's office. It doesn't... Counties themselves don't generate the official voter information records any longer. So, the state would need to join, Eric, for that to become part of the official voter registration information.
Do you know what... Thank you for sharing that. Do you know why the state isn't currently a part of... Doesn't currently use, Eric?
No, and I don't even want to hazard...
Yeah.
I don't know the... Yeah.
That's fair. Well, there has been a lot of... There have been a lot of issues across the country about folks leaving Eric. And so, it's just of interest to me that we're... Not "we," meaning San Francisco, but we as a state are not a part of it. So, thank you. Thank you for clarifying. And then, the only other piece, which is more just an observation than a question, was the Instagram poll, which I did see go up, because I do follow the department on Instagram. And I think that's interesting, even though, obviously, I don't know how many people participated in the survey, that, given the age demographic of folks who are on Instagram and use Instagram, that, you know, more than half had... Who participated in this poll, followed it, indicated that they wanted to maintain print. I think that's just interesting that the Commission might continue to keep in mind, though I really... I do appreciate the element of the multi-voter households, because I think that's a great compromise. So, I just wanted to call that out.
Thank you.
Thank you for this report. Were there any other comments from commissioners? Moving right along, let's take public comment.
I have no answers.
Okay.
There are no public commenters for this agenda item.
Okay. Okay, it's unusual. All right, well, let's close Agenda Item Number Four and move to Agenda Item Number Five, Commissioners Reports. Discussion and Possible Action on Commissioners Reports for topics not covered by another item on this agenda. Meetings with public officials, oversight and observation activities, long-range planning for Commission activities, areas of study, proposed legislation which affect elections, others. And so, I have a couple of items, but I will hand it over to the other commissioners first, and then I will all go into mine. So, Vice President Giordano, I see you have attachments. We'll start with you.
Okay, thank you, President Stone. I have four things to mention. First, I just want to let the Commission know I haven't forgotten about the annual report for 2022. And that's something I'm going to try to finish that this summer and have a draft to present to you sometime this summer. And then, yes, President Stone mentioned, I did attach three memos to the packet. Now, I just want to review them very quickly. The first memo is around the department website, and I noticed that some things about an RFI from 2015 weren't carried over, but I noticed that that information was put up, I guess, in the past few days. So, thank you, Director Ernst, for putting that up, so people can ignore that memo. And then, there was a second document where I... Because a lot of the Commission is new, I wanted to kind of present an overview of the support for open source voting over the past several years. And this document I have shows a photo from a rally that we had in 2018, where London Breed, Scott Wiener, then Assembly Member David Chu, Malia Cohen, Christine Plosi, and Mark Leno were all at this rally and holding open source signs. And then, the document also has some excerpts from resolutions that the Board and the Commission passed back in 2014 and 2015, asking the department to collaborate with other organizations on an open source system. And there's also a quote from former Governor Brown from 2021 in support of open source voting. That was in San Francisco at KQED. And then, there's also a resolution from 2016 from the Democratic County Central Committee. That was in support. That was unanimous resolution. And then the the last memo is it's another memo about the DVS order privacy flaw. And at the last meeting, you might remember that I found there's a state law that looks like Dominion was required to notify the department within 30 days. And at the last meeting, I'd asked if our contract has any language around this. And I did review the contract, and I found that there is language saying that Dominion has to comply with the law. And then it has some information about what we can do in response. And basically, we can our our contract permits us to, you know, seek them to like fulfill aspects that they're not complying with. And then I have the experts and the experts in the contract. But Director Ernst, I was wondering if for the next meeting, you could maybe, you know, look at the information that in that memo and from the previous meetings and let us know if there's anything that you could do, you know, in response to this. You know, for example, I think at minimum Dominion could provide the notification that they were supposed to provide us over the summer, just confirming that there was this vulnerability. And then maybe also assure us that going forward, they will notify us sometime. But just basically, you know, just to let us know if you're going to be doing anything in response, you know, because this contract language is in there. Or if you're going to do nothing, just just to let us know. But so that's that's all I have to report. Yeah, so thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Giordano. Did other commissioners Commissioner Hayden Crowley?
I just have a question about the Dominion contract memo. And thank you, Commissioner Giordano, for your extensive research. Should the DCA be weighing in on this?
Yes, Vice President Giordano.
Yeah, at the last meeting, I did ask the deputy city attorney if if they could look into it. So but I don't know if I didn't remind them since the meeting, but I would still be curious about it.
Commissioner Hayden Crowley?
Thank you, President Stone. I I think that before Director Ernst provides, I I think whatever you decide, but I do think that the DCA needs to review the information that you compiled, Commissioner Giordano, before we move forward. I think that that would be very important to have the legal assessment, for better for worse.
DCA Flores, I don't know if you wanted to add anything.
Just to clarify, I don't know what type of legal assessment I could make. If there's if it's been determined that there's a breach of contract, then the remedy is available, which is what Vice President Giordano asked me to look at. And I saw that he posted the remedies available on his memo, so I didn't think it was pertinent to bring it up since he already mentioned it. But yeah, if there's a breach of contract, if there's a determination, if there's a breach of contract, those are the remedies available. We are not in a position to make that determination. And so the commission is also not in that position to make that determination. And just a quick reminder that contract entering into a contract, administration of a contract, monitoring of a contract, and anything having to do with contracting is within the sphere of what the Director of Elections does. So truthfully, like, the commission couldn't take any action on this contract, per se. It's and if the director wants us to wants to discuss this with us, we're open to providing any assistance possible.
Thank you, DCA Flores. Vice President Giordano.
Yeah, so that's kind of why I was I was just asking if Director Ernst could, you know, at the next meeting, just tell us what what you're thinking on it is. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Giordano, and Commissioner Hayden Crowley. Commissioner Hayden Crowley, was that it?
I I'm still confused because when I while I appreciate Commissioner Giordano putting out the remedies. Commissioner Giordano, with all due respect, you're not an attorney. That's why I think it's important that the DCA that that go through the DCA. That's just my I'm not an attorney, but that's my assessment.
So thank you, Commissioner Hayden Crowley. Point of clarification, my understanding, based on the kind of back and forth here is that Vice President Giordano drafted drafted these remedies, and it seems as though DCA Flores can validate affirmed that those were the available remedies.
Okay.
But that also restated the role of the commission in contracting, in the nuances of our contracting relationships. Is that accurate, DCA Flores? Okay. For the record, DCA Flores nodded. Yes. Vice President Giordano.
Yeah, Commissioner Hayden Crowley. Yeah, I would I would assume and hope that Director Ernst would consult with the DCA, you know, before getting back to us. But it's I think what DCA Flores's point is that, you know, she's available to assist whoever needs assistance. But and that and the stuff I wrote is not official. It's just my own interpretation. But yeah, it would need to be confirmed.
Thank you. Commissioner Di.
Yeah, I just had some good news to share, and it's the reason for my potential absence for the June meeting. I was recently was awarded a fellowship to attend Harvard Kennedy School's program on for senior executives in state and local government. So that's in relation to my capacity as an elections commissioner. So I will be in Cambridge for three weeks in June and hope I will learn some skills that I can bring back to the Elections Commission. I will also be asking in Agenda Item Eight, if the Elections Commission would consider rescheduling the June meeting to the last week of June, if it's possible. And I understand if it's not, because I prefer not to miss the June meeting, but right now it's smack in the middle, so.
Thanks, Commissioner Di. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I guess we'll discuss that in Agenda Item Number Eight in terms of the meeting. Anyone else have comments? Okay, I have a handful. So I know everyone loves to talk about Robert's rules, but let me kind of contextualize this a little bit. So I I continuously get feedback from individual commissioners about how late our meetings go. I do believe we've made improvements, but to continue making our meetings run more smoothly, fairly, productively, I think it's going to require all of our participation. So there are a couple of ways I'm trying to approach this. The first is that I may begin, actually, I am going to begin using time limits for certain discussions where appropriate. So, for example, today, I will be asking that we follow time limits for the closed session in addition to the redistricting item, and it is not targeting the director nor Commissioners Volsey and Commissioners and Commissioner Di. It is solely looking at agenda items that are particularly lengthy and seeing how we can streamline them a little bit. And I will make sure going forward as that happens that I will announce publicly, and I will also ask Secretary Davis to support. And I'll talk a little bit more about that process later. Second, after rewatching our past meetings, as I mentioned earlier, I think we are starting to get the hang of Robert's rules, but I do think there are ways that we can still mitigate some inefficient back and forths. So specifically, I wanted to call out Page Three of that document. Obviously, everyone is familiar with the fact that meeting participants should obtain the floor before offering comment and make sure that they're recognized. And then there are additional rules on that going forward, you know, getting called by name. And but Pages Three and Four, and specifically Number Six on Page Four about debate, I would recommend folks remind or refresh their understanding of that, specifically, you know, the details included there, that each member has the opportunity to comment before any member can comment for a second time. Some members may cede their time to another commissioner. So let's say I've already spoken and Vice President Giordano doesn't want to speak. He can say, I cede my time to President Stone if I wanted to repeat that again, not to pick on you either, Vice President Giordano. But I I'm hopeful that that will help kind of streamline things. So for moments when it is fair to interject out of this debate process, please, you can also refer to Page Five for Rules of Order, excuse me, Point of Order, Point of Information slash Clarification, Point of Privilege. So Point of Order I will use, I have used in the past. I will continue to try and use it when interruptions become disruptive. I'm going to try and not be, you know, too authoritarian about that. But I think it also can be disruptive when we're just constantly interrupting each other, which does sometimes happen when we're talking about something that's important to us. And then Point of Information Clarification can be used. I think you need information, you know, you want to clarify something or you want to provide a clarification about something such as what just happened. Point of Privilege is addressing the physical needs of a meeting room. So, for example, we talk about our discomfort with how cold or hot. It can be insecure sometimes. But the idea is that these point requesting points of something should be brief and not lead to more back and forth, back and forth. So the last thing I just wanted to mention about this is that these these rules apply to all discussions, including when we have our own agenda items. So let's say, sorry, Vice President Giordano to pick on you again, but let's say you wanted your own agenda item on open source voting. You will be recognized to introduce the topic and the comments and share more about it. But once you've introduced the item or once a commissioner has introduced an item, the discussion process should follow those same rules of debate. So that means that if Vice President Giordano, unless it's in terms of a point of order or point of information, et cetera, will have to wait to respond to questions or comments until everyone has had the opportunity to either speak for the first time or cede their time. So I know that this can be difficult when it's your agenda item, but to the best of your ability, I think that will help us run our meetings more efficiently. I also can update this document, though I know no one really loves it, to specifically state that this is kind of the rules of debate when it's your own agenda item as well. Are there any specific questions about that? Yes, Vice President Giordano.
Yeah, thank you, President Stone, for, you know, compiling all this together. One question I have is when if say like someone is speaking and they want to ask someone else a question, does does like the person speaking get decided if they want to if the person can answer or is it does it go back to the president and the president has to recognize the?
Thank you for that question. So the the if there's a point, if someone is requesting information, actually, let me ask a clarifying question. What are you saying the person whose agenda item it is if what I'm going to pick on you again, if it's your agenda item and you are someone another commissioner is talking about something and you want to ask that commissioner a question? Or can you put it into a term so I can understand?
Yeah, well, just in in general, like, maybe like in the agenda in the in this agenda item, when Commissioner Hayden Crowley maybe has if she had a question about what I just said, and then it was her turn to speak, and then she said, oh, can you answer this question? Can I answer or does it need do you need to recognize or how does that work?
I think probably better to recognize folks in response. So Commissioner Hayden Crowley could say, and I honestly don't even remember how it went down, so I'm just pretending that it happened the way it is in my mind. But Commissioner Hayden Crowley can say, you know, point of information or point of clarification. And then if you, Vice President Giordano, wanted to respond to the question that Commissioner Hayden Crowley had presented, you would raise your hand. And I then, as as President Parliamentarian, whatever, would say, yes, Vice President Giordano. But if it becomes a back and forth between commissioners, that's when I think it becomes going out of order of debate process. And that's honestly, I'm glad you brought it up because that is often in our previous meetings, I think, where we end up kind of having longer conversations. So in an effort to try and streamline our meeting, not streamline, but have shorter meetings, I think it could be more more productive to or efficient to do it that way. But if folks have strong feelings against that, I welcome your feedback. Sorry, that was long-winded.
Thank you.
I have a
Yep.
Comment and question. I have to be honest with you. I'm uncomfortable with what I feel to be a level of control of our discussions that I don't think is based in anything that's absolutely necessary. Yes, we have had long meetings, but I think what has been wonderful and democratic about those meetings is that we have all had the opportunity to speak and to say what we think. And yes, it is important for us to have decorum. Since I have been here, I have not seen a situation where we've had a lack of decorum. And I would like to remind you that it is these types of rules that were used in Nashville to silence people. And so I want you to just think about what I find to be an extreme level of control as opposed to what is actually happening here. So yes, we've had meetings go on for a long time, and I think you've done an excellent job in keeping us on track, and our meetings have been shorter. But I'm very uncomfortable with the level of what I feel to be extreme control in who speaks, how they speak. And I'd like to ask DCA Flores if this is something we are required to do, if there needs to be a vote on it. And I would feel more comfortable if we if we all agree, and I'm the only descending vote, that's different. But I I feel this is a level of control that makes me uncomfortable with how we do things because since I've been here, I haven't seen a situation where decorum has gotten out of control. And so I understand your desire to streamline our meetings. I appreciate it. And I think since you've been president, we have streamlined. But to say who can talk when they can talk, I'm uncomfortable with that. And so I just want to make that clear.
Thank you, Commissioner Volsey. I appreciate the feedback. And I wanted to provide a few areas of clarification. First of all, these are in our bylaws to follow Robert's rules, so I'm just simply following rules. I'm not trying to control, and I also have not suppressed anyone's voice. This is simply just to allow everyone the equal opportunity to speak once, and you don't have to speak if you don't want to. These are the these are the Robert's Rules of Order. I'm happy I feel as though I've tried to be I've tried to use the structure of Robert's rules while also not being overly controlling with how they're used. My observation and from other commissioners is that there is a lot of interrupting. And I believe, Commissioner Volsey, you yourself have shared that you felt that you'd been interrupted a couple of times. So I'm trying to create a I'm trying to establish fair rules. And if you feel after we work, you know, continue to try and adopt to these rules that the commission that are within the bylaws, and you feel as though I am in effect controlling, then I will I welcome that in practice. The final thing I'd like to share, which I can understand the sentiment behind your concern regarding Nashville, but that's actually not what happened in Nashville. And it's I take what you're saying very seriously. I actually went and saw Justin Jones speak four days ago in person, and I'm very, very familiar with what happened. And I I can commit to reflecting on your concerns. And I also welcome the feedback that if you feel that you've been silenced or if you feel that folks have been silenced while we're working through these rules, then I will listen to that feedback. I've always been open to feedback. It is not an attempt to control or silence, and I have not controlled nor silenced anyone. It is not an attempt to control or silence, and I have not controlled nor silenced anyone. I feel pretty, I feel like I've tried to be fair. I think there are many people who have interrupted, including myself, and I want to hold myself to a better standard as well.
I have a question for DCA Flores.
Sure.
Yes, thank you. So your bylaws adopt Robert's Rules of Order, and it says at the discretion of the president. Unless otherwise directed by the charter, you shall use Robert's Rules of Order. So.
Are we required to use all rules?
It's at the discretion of the president.
Okay, and so there's no vote? It's just at the discretion of the president?
Right.
Okay.
Commissioners, Commissioner Hayden Crowley?
I just, I appreciate what everybody is saying here. I, as someone who interrupts, I like the fact that we are restoring order here and I'm not interrupting as much. And I really appreciate that because I think that there's a lot of back and forth. And while that is great in a conversation, we're in a commission meeting, and these meetings, quite frankly, for my purposes, just go way too long. And I just appreciate the fact that we're following a system that has worked well for other commissions and other bodies. The Board of Supervisors follows it. And I just think if we could give it a try, and I appreciate all the thought that you've put into it and the research that you've done, as well as your considerations to Commissioner Levolce, I just would like, I just like the idea of letting everybody speak first and then if somebody has something more to say. But the back and forth tends to go on and on. That's my observation and extends the evening when, and then, and then I just think that we, that, I'm not even making sense anymore, but I like the taking turns thing. Here it ends.
Commissioner, thank you, Commissioner Hayden Crowley. Commissioner Dai.
Thank you, President Stone. So a couple of comments. I think time limits are a good idea and very reasonable as long as, you know, announced in advance so that, you know, commissioners whose agenda item it is can plan around that. So I think it's a great idea. As someone who, you know, was part of a body that used Robert's Rules of Order to run our meetings, I would just say that we use it as a guide and not, you know, that, again, it's like your discretion, if it makes sense. For example, the idea of handing it over to someone whose agenda item it is, for example, and not having to go back each time, I think that's a reasonable way to go. That's something that the CRC did. So, you know, I do think, you know, Robert's Rules of Order has worked well for hundreds of years, so there is a lot of thought behind it. But it's supposed to help. It's not supposed to constrain, it's supposed to help. And so I think as long as you keep that in mind, then I think that's fine. And then one last comment. As, as, as I learned recently, there are some stronger requirements that our Sunshine Ordinance requires. So for example, in the minutes, while Robert's Rules says we don't have to say what people said, actually, the Sunshine Ordinance actually requires a brief summary, I believe. For example, we have public comment. So, so you might want to just like annotate some things here if there's a stricter requirement by the Sunshine Ordinance. So that's one place that I think there's a little bit of a conflict. There's a stronger requirement by the Sunshine Ordinance for transparency reasons.
Thank you, Commissioner Dai.
Yep, so, yeah, sorry.
Vice President Giordano.
I, well, I like, I like to see everybody happy about things when it's possible, but I think, because I listened to what Commissioner Levolce said, and I want to try to see if there's some kind of common, like, ground or something. But like, I think, from what I, in interpreting, I think part of the reason this was sort of spurred on by some people interrupting other people and which, which, when you prevent people from being interrupted, it allows them to speak. So I think some of it was motivated by allowing people to speak. But at the same time, it shouldn't be used to suppress people from speaking too. So I'm wondering if there's, like, I don't know how to reach a place where we're all happy completely with, with what we decide on doing. But like, is there, are there certain scenarios you see where, with the rules, that people could be prevented from speaking or Commissioner Levolce, or is there certain aspects of it that you're not comfortable with?
I, I would like for us as a group to agree, if possible, to what is that time limit? What's a reasonable time limit? I think that's what concerned me the most because I know that sometimes, sometimes we may have difficulty articulating our thoughts or we're still thinking about what we're saying. And so I want that time limit to be reasonable. I think I'm the commissioner who speaks the least. So I have watched and listened, and there have been moments where other commissioners have interrupted, and I think it is important to keep decorum. But I'm concerned about constraining other members' ability to speak, and I'm concerned that our desire to end meetings early could get in the way of everyone having a voice. By the way, I like going to bed at a reasonable time as well, but I also like hearing because I feel each of us brings certain skills and experiences that are helpful to discussions.
Thank you, Commissioner Levolce and Vice President, Vice President Giordano. Was there more you wanted to add?
No, thanks.
I, I appreciate the feedback everyone's given. I also appreciate those who are willing to own how they participate. I think that's always a hard thing to do. And as I stated previously, Commissioner Levolce, just wanted to share this with you because you had brought up the initial concerns. I will always welcome your feedback and thoughts about if things aren't working correctly and if you feel that they're not being fair. And so this is, this is, this can be an ongoing conversation that we have. I, the idea is to make the whole body operate better. I think we all have nuances in our own particular identities. There are health equity components to having our meetings run very late as well that I'm trying to be considerate of, which I've mentioned in the past. And so I want to make sure that I can do my best to accommodate all of those while still being productive. I can understand the concerns about the time limits, but I also have found that that's also helped us, for some folks, actually participate better by not being so exhausted that they aren't, you know, operating in the way that they necessarily want as well. So there are many ways, but control is not the intention. If that is the impact, I welcome that feedback as we go along. And that's not just to Commissioner Levolce, that's to everyone. Are there other comments or questions about that specifically? There were a few other items that I wanted to mention. I'll be, Secretary Davis shared a, an email with the commission earlier with a, asking folks to participate in a survey, asking commissioners to provide their availability for the retreat. I want to give everyone a good amount of advance notice, including the public. So if you can complete that by next Thursday, that would be great. We'll, of course, follow the, all the good government guide on retreat site visits and gatherings to make sure we're complying with public meeting requirements. And then more, but more details will follow. Couple other things. I did share the racial equity slides that we had worked through in the last meeting. I did share the specific edits with Commissioner Levolce offline, got her blessing. And I shared those with the director. I did want to also mention specifically Commissioner Dai had asked about changes that I requested that the director make in his document, which I also, also shared with the director as well, so I wanted to follow up on that. So that's been updated. Additionally, a member, I believe, folks, although it may have just been Vice President Giordano, myself and Commissioner Hayden Crowley, I'm not sure if other folks were included, so I'm going to just quickly reshare it here. But a member from a professional exchange program partnering with the State Department who is interested in having a conversation with the Elections Commission on the role of volunteerism in civil society, asked if the commission could meet and have a conversation. So Vice President Giordano and I believe myself will be meeting with them next, next week to have that conversation and we'll be sharing that, we'll share what we learn. It may just be Vice President Giordano. And the last piece that I, I want to share is that I am going to be taking the information about the proposal from BOPAC regarding website demographics and incorporating some of the conversations that we had last time. I had wanted to share some visuals about how other groups or boards share their demographic information in a nice aggregated way, but learned from Vice President Giordano that some things may not be as feasible. So I'm actually going to be working with digital services to understand how we can do it. It may just have to be listing percentages, but that is something that is on my, on my I think that is all. Does anyone have any other comments or points that they would like to make? Okay, let's move to public comment.
Mr. Turner, once I unmute you, you'll have three minutes to make your comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Your voice, by the way, before I came on was a little, a little distant, just so you know. I could hear it, but it was in the background more than usual. Okay, thank you, commissioners, for your attention tonight. Back at the beginning of this particular agenda item, there was conversation regarding Director Arns. And one thing I think we're seeing is, is a sort of a cat and mouse game with some of the information that's to be available consistently regarding open source on the website. So that, that should be noted. Also, regarding this Dominion contract, I think Commissioner Giordano made it pretty clear, this is not some sort of a fringe issue or Democrat versus Republican issue. This work was initially done here in San Francisco by nonpartisan groups and then supported completely by the Democratic Party, Christine Pelosi, David Chu, everyone in the political arena. I don't think anyone was against it because it's just common sense that you don't want a corporation in control of your election software. And I think we learned that in 2016. So it's not just a 2016 versus 2022 issue either. So I think the commission would be well-served by getting a, the attorney's opinion on this. I know it's a tough one for David Chu because he's previously supported open source, and it appears now that we're just putting in complete control into the hands of John Arns to his shown a predisposition against open source and for this proprietary brand that we've had for so long. Thank you for your time tonight and your attention to this issue. Thank you.
Okay, you're now back on mute. And there are no other public commenters.
Thank you, Secretary Davis, and welcome, Commissioner Parker. We are just about to close Agenda Item Number Five on Commissioners' Reports. Given that we haven't closed the Agenda Item, wanted to welcome, in case you had any comments or anything you would like to add before we move to the next Agenda Item.
Thank you, President Stone. No, I just, I appreciate all the work that everybody did when I reviewed all those ahead of time, so I don't have any questions that I needed answered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Parker. Okay. We're going to close Agenda Item Number Five and move to Agenda Item Number Six, Closed Session: Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Annual Performance Evaluation of John Arns, the Director of Elections. First, we're going to take public comment on all matters pertaining to this Agenda Item, including, including whether to meet in closed session. So Secretary Davis, would you mind taking public comment?
I have, excuse me, here's a public comment, Brett Turner. Mr. Turner, once I unmute you, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, commissioners. On behalf of the public, at the risk of being redundant, we just want to mention our disappointment in the director's performance. The biggest issue we see right now in the United States is restoring voter confidence in the election systems and make sure, making sure that we retain voter confidence in the election systems. Transparency is a part of that effort. And this particular commissioner has blocked efforts toward transparency for the past 15 years. It's been going on again. I refer to it as a cat and mouse game. Unfortunately, he's the cat and the American public appear to be the mice. And so we have to just tender objection. His relationship with Dominion is inappropriate. I'm sure it would be inappropriate, no matter who the vendor was, but we're just suffering through. And I know it's, there's been a level of competency regarding the election, the elections, but this is not tolerable. The, is, is insubordinate behavior around the voting system contracts, his relationship with the Secretary of State, the disinformation, misinformation, and in general disregard for, for the commission. We never brought Dominion in front of the commission when they were in the newspaper disparaging the county and the commission, and now we find out that they're in violation of, that they're in violation of the contract. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, I see no other commenters.
Thank you, Secretary Davis. We're now going to move to Six B, a vote on whether to meet in closed session to consider this Agenda Item pursuant to California Government-- this Agenda Item pursuant to California Government Code 54957B and San Francisco Administrative Code 67.10B. And we will move to a roll call vote.
Will somebody second that?
Oh, we don't need a second. Thank you.
President Stone?
Yes.
Vice President Giordano?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernholtz?
I'm not here.
Commissioner Dai?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayden Crowley?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVolsi?
Yes.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
This does pass for a closed session as moved by President Stone.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, directors.
We're going to take a seven-minute break to figure out the tech around the closed session, but we will reconvene in closed session after, after we've completed it. The time is 8:25 PM, and we are going to reconvene and move to Item 6E, Discussion and Vote Pursuant to Sunshine Ordinance 67.12A, on whether to disclose any portion of the closed session discussion regarding the public employee performance evaluation. Would anyone like to make a motion? Vice President Giordano?
I move that we disclose no portion of the closed session discussion.
Second.
So we don't need to take public comment because we already did. So, Secretary Davis, would you mind moving to the roll call vote?
Yes, President Stone?
Yes.
Vice President Giordano?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernholtz out. Commissioner Dai?
We'll return to Commissioner Dai.
Okay. Commissioner Hayden Crowley?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVolsi?
Yes.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Vote absentia. Commissioner Dai stepped out, so I think we can call the vote. We have a majority.
We still have a majority, so that passes to not disclose. Here she comes.
Okay, there we go.
How she wants to vote. Everything has to vote. We've got a closer one.
Okay, sorry. My apologies. Secretary Davis, will you call Commissioner Dai's vote?
There was a motion to not disclose a portion of this meeting. How would you vote?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Dai, and thank you, Secretary Davis. So we have voted to not disclose any portion of the closed session, and we have now closed Agenda Item Number Six. And we'll move to Agenda Item Number Seven, Redistricting Process Initiative: Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Commission's Ongoing Redistricting Process Initiative. So there are a handful of attachments, and I'm going to hand the baton over to Commissioners Dai and LaVolsi. I did mention that I would try and set a time. It won't be stringent. We can set the 30 minutes and then see where we're at, set another 15. If we want to extend, we can extend. Before we start the clock, though, as to not take away from the actual discussion, I just wanted to ground the conversation because there was a fair amount happening offline and online, and there is a lot of my consultation personally with the deputy city attorneys. So I wanted to share, and there are also some folks who were present or not present at meetings, so I just wanted to share some of the historical information pertaining to some components of creating an advisory committee or task force or group, just to get us on the same page. And these are not specifically to my opinions. These are the, this is just kind of a recap of what happened over the last several months. And then the second piece is some of the considerations or questions that I think we've kind of gotten tangled in in the last few meetings. And then the third is some of the insight and direction that the W City attorneys have offered the commission. And so I wanted to kind of share all of that to ensure we're on the same page and I'm being transparent. So at the March regular meeting, the commission discussed options for how the initiative could and should proceed, including the idea of an advisory task force or committee or informal group. The commission ultimately decided that more information would be necessary to consider establishing a body, and the commission unanimously voted to have Commissioners redraft Dai and LaVolsi, redraft the project plan, incorporate feedback from the discussion, and present a proposal for next steps at the April meeting. As discussed in that meeting and also offline, the commission bylaws require a majority of vote to establish committees. Committees are also inclusive of three members of the commission who are participating in the initiative work, which has been reiterated and discussed over the last couple of months. I know that, as an aside, I know that there was some discussion in the minutes about the March meeting, so if there's a difference in opinion in how I presented that, Commissioner Dai, welcome that. At the April regular meeting, the commission discussed that and learned that the advisory group had already been formed, and there were several commissioners that expressed, in addition to the DCA, expressed that there was some surprise and unpreparedness to have that conversation. Several commissioners, including myself, did state, though, that it was kind of water under the bridge, but wanted more information and transparency about what the body would entail, and asked the commissioners leading the charge, Commissioners Dai and LaVolsi, to present a document that describes the committee's proposed deliverables, outputs, governance, and transparency considerations. We actually voted on that unanimously. After the last meeting, a meeting was scheduled for this advisory body to be held prior to, or a meeting with the advisory body to be held prior to today's meeting. After consultation with the DCAs regarding the Sunshine Ordinance and Brown Act, I personally asked for the meeting to be postponed and asked the Commissioner Dai and Commissioner LaVolsi to seek commission's vote on formally establishing this committee to ensure that the body could comply with state, city laws, or state and local laws, and then in addition to the commission bylaws. So some of the areas that I believed had come up as questions and considerations over the last several months that I think have caused, that I've been striving to kind of untangle myself and thought I would kind of lay it out for everyone that I think can help clarify some of the discussion going forward. First is how the committee has been referenced versus how it operates. So I know there's been conversation about whether it's a committee or a task force or a group or a panel, if it's external, if it's informal, if it's advisory versus a policy body, if it's advising a single commissioner versus the entire commission, when is it considered sanctioned by the commission. Those are all things that I believe we kind of had come up as considerations. The second component of this is how, the rules that we follow, so specifically implications around the Sunshine Ordinance and the Brown Act, what is a passive body versus a policy body, what is the role of one commissioner versus two commissioners versus three commissioners, and also what is a codified process that are included in our bylaws for establishing those committees. And the final piece of that that I wanted to add myself is just the commission consensus. So as a democratic body, I think we all agree that the consensus and action by the commission is very important, and that when we agree to things, making sure that if we're not clear on what those things are, rewatching the recordings or asking for clarification, I think those things we can all agree to. So those are the things that over the last several months have gone on and I think have caused some confusion. And so I asked the deputy city attorneys to provide some insight ahead of today on how we can move forward, knowing that some of this had been kind of confusing, and they provided three kind of way, three different paths that I wanted to share after kind of untangling some of the things that we just talked about. And again, this is not getting, I'm not opining on direction. This is specifically just the direction that we could go. There are three paths. So first is the commission could vote to establish a formal committee, which is by majority vote, is not unanimous, a majority vote can establish a formal committee, and that committee would have to follow the Brown Act, Sunshine Ordinance, all public meeting requirements, and including obviously what's in our bylaws, and it would be considered sanctioned by the commission, so it wouldn't be external to the commission. Other commissioners who are working on this initiative, even if they're not in some of those meetings, would still be considered part of this body. It would also include, you know, using resources of the commission, including the secretary, and establishing agendas, meetings, meeting minutes, et cetera. Option number two is one commissioner to hold a passive meeting and have a passive meeting body with the folks that were originally slated to be incorporated into the advisory group or advisory panel. So what does that mean in practice? So the idea is that the group would solely advise a single commissioner as opposed to the full commission, and the meetings must follow passive meeting rules, which are a little less stringent, significantly less stringent, than what a formal committee would have to do. So specifically, and the DCAs can share more detail on this, but generally, meet in public in San Francisco, strive to give notice, but not required to take public comment. The important thing to note about option number two here is that both commissioners cannot work on this at once. It would have to be one commissioner holding that passive, those passive meeting bodies. And then the path number three is that, again, one commissioner works alone to gather information through one-on-meetings with individuals, subject matter experts, and then develop recommendations as the commissioner based on that input that is then provided to the commission for consideration. So I think that's pretty straightforward, but happy to answer some questions on that. And then there's one last kind of bucket of things that I wanted to share before handing this over, which is just considerations. So a couple of things that we've talked about as a body are what's happening at the state level. So AB 1248, which I imagine Commissioners Dai and LaVolsi will also speak to today, although don't want to assume, is currently, as we know, on the Assembly Four floor. The next hearing date is in the Appropriations Committee tomorrow, and importantly, the legislative session closes in September, and then Governor Newsom has 30 days to potentially veto. An important piece of that is that the governor has vetoed a similar bill in the past. And the important consideration that I wanted to call out is that there are different implications for what San Francisco would have to do, as we all know from the document that came from the city attorney's office, if that passes or doesn't pass. Second piece is kind of the criteria that we're using to evaluate this initiative and kind of how we want to proceed. So transparency, access to the public of some of these discussions. You know, we did vote last month to make our meetings more accessible. What does that look like for certain other areas? And then resources, we've talked a fair amount about, not just, you know, ours as a commission and the agenda time and the secretary, but also the advocacy organizations that we would be asking to support this initiative and their resources. And finally, the goals and what is it that we want to achieve and the path to get there. So I realize that is quite a lot. I didn't want to, again, opine on my opinion, but I did want to share a recap. I wanted to share the learnings based on the confusion and some of the questions that had come up in previous meetings and share that with all of you transparently, in addition to sharing what had happened offline with the full commission for their consideration. So like I said, I didn't want to start our timer and suppress the other components of this topic, but I can take any questions. Otherwise, I will hand it over to Commissioners Dai and Commissioner LaVolsi.
Okay.
Were there any questions? Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Dai.
All right, so very quickly, I just want to review what the attachments are. All of you received my little what's new thing, but for the benefit of the public, the first item is a legal memo from our DCAs with their analysis of AB 1248. The second item is a minor, very minor revision of the project plan, which just adjusted the start date by a month, given that we didn't have the meeting last month, and also replacing the word committee with panel. It was advisory panel in a couple of instances and, you know, fierce committee in a few instances, so we just changed it all to advisory panel. And then finally, we changed the header on Page Six, just to clarify that the communications plan was something we would hand over to the board, which was some of the feedback we got in the March meeting. And then the third item is a fact sheet for AB 764, which is companion legislation to AB 1248. It basically codifies some of the other recommendations that came out of the Fair Maps report that all of us took a look at. So it's a one-pager. We're not going to discuss it today, just posting it early for potentially discussion later. And then last but not least is the requested document that summarizes what our intended purpose was for this advisory panel and operation. Of course, we prepared this and posted it before I was advised earlier today by DCA Flores about the fact that only one commissioner can be on a passive meeting body. So just to clarify and reinforce what President Stone said, where we had left things at the last meeting was that this would be an informal body. We were informed and we were told that we could have whatever meetings we want, as long as it was informal and not a commission committee. But after the meeting, I was contacted by the DCAs to clarify that, in fact, under the Sunshine Ordinance, we're considered a passive meeting body, and so, and the rest of the events transpired, as President Stone said. So we held off on actually meeting. The only thing I wanted to say is that the advisory panel was proposed. It was in Project Plan Version Five. We had not met officially. We had only informally met to introduce people to each other, just so that they knew who else had volunteered to serve. And so we were waiting on approval from the full commission to move forward. So having said that, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner LaVolsi to run through the content of the two-pager on the charter and take any questions, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Dai. Commissioner LaVolsi?
Thank you, Commissioner Dai. So this group, the intended purpose is to make sure that we have the information we need to really come up with an effective plan, and also to make sure that we are hearing from voices in good government groups that have been doing this work for a tremendous amount of time, and also to make sure that we're hearing from diverse members of the community as well. And so the goal is to make sure that we understand that this is purely advisory. This is not a group that is making policy. This is a group that would be informing us on best practices, and then that information we would bring to the full commission. The other goal is, because time is of the essence, we would like to make sure that the information that's given is from reliable sources, such as, as you can see, this is a blue-ribbon panel of people who have a tremendous expertise that many of us don't have. And our first meeting was really just, as Commissioner Dai said, to come up with his name and for us to know who we are and know a little bit about our backgrounds. And at this stage, I'm assuming everyone has read it, and so next stage would be to move forward as to whether we'd like to create this advisory group. My understanding is now that only one of us could meet with this group, and that's something that we would have to think about as far as our schedules, as people who as people who have other responsibilities outside of the commission. I, my feeling personally is that there isn't a need to create a committee because of the short length of time that we were considering to meet. But that's, of course, up to us as a body to decide. So I think, if there are any questions, I think the mission and scope are here, and that's what our goal is. And to make the meetings publicly accessible, we would just want a space in City Hall just to make sure that whoever it is of us who is doing this has the technology. It's also, you know, safety as far as where they are and where they're located. Is there anything you wanted to add, Commissioner Di?
Yeah, I mean, I will say that, you know, the thought is we're kind of 90% there with AB 1248, regardless of whether it's passed or it's vetoed by the governor. It's model legislation, and it incorporates most of the best practices that we've been discussing for the past year. Really, the thing that differentiates San Francisco and the reason we got caught up in the 1248 discussion and the reason they did not exempt charter cities this time is because of our political appointment process. And that is the main thing that we wanted this group to kind of discuss because we also have a higher-than-average number of supervisors. And so kind of the cookie-cutter approach that 1248 has may not completely work for us. And that's what we wanted this group to discuss. So I think originally, our thought was this group would meet, you know, once, maybe twice. So it was intended to be a very short-lived advisory group to just help us tweak the last 10%. And then we would come back and present the recommendations, the pros and cons, what the options are, what were less bad options, et cetera, for the full commission to debate and decide on. So that was the thinking of having this external volunteer group kind of do the heavy lifting of pashing through that last 10%.
I would just...
Commissioner Hayden Crowley.
In the interest of time, because I do have to leave at nine, President Stone went through three different ways that this can move forward. And I think number one is probably off the table. Number one, which is the committee, the commission would be involved in this process.
I'll jump in there as a point of clarification. So option number one is to have more than one commissioner participate, which, just based on the document that, based on the document, and there are a couple of lines in there that say this, that it would be this body advising the commission, not commissioner, that it would be advising or to inform decisions of the commission, that that would be a committee. That's not, that that is not a, by virtue of it being more than one commissioner and operating with two commissioners and informing, you know, stating as it being a, informing the decisions of our policies, that would be a committee. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. And number two was having a one person on this commission, but having an advisory in a public setting. And number three was to have an advisory just among the advisory and the one person.
I'll clarify that. So option number two is to have one commissioner, oh, I'll say it, and then if I get it wrong, you can clean it up, is to have one commissioner do the advisory group that would not be required to follow the same rules as a committee. But in that regard, it would be advising the commissioner, who would then be advising the commission. And then the third option is, let's say, Commissioner LaVolsi or Commissioner Di individually meeting with the individual members. So Commissioner LaVolsi meeting with Ms. Girardan individually and then using the information gathered. In fact, DCA Flores gave a really great example of this to me when we spoke, which is that, like how I presented all of the information for the secretary, for the secretary higher position, I found, you know, I pulled from HR, I pulled from here, I pulled from there, and then presented the commission with options to consider rather than meeting as a group. If we meet as a group with one commissioner, that would be option number two. Does that clarify?
I think I like that last one. Or, I don't know, the less complicated one.
Commissioner Di.
Yeah, so actually, the last one's off the table because neither Commissioner LaVolsi nor I have time to meet individually.
Yeah, that's not happening.
Yeah, so what I think Commissioner LaVolsi was proposing is that we take the charter and we take one of our names off and just make it clear that this advisory panel is advising whichever name is left. So, because the whole reason we wanted to do this was to reduce the burden on the commission and, you know, our limited commission resources, including our secretary, you know, forcing three of us to have to meet so that we could be more nimble in between meetings and kind of get this done really quickly and be able to advise the commission. So I had originally requested a commission committee because it hadn't occurred to me to do it in some other way. And actually, President Stone was the one who suggested about, you know, having community groups, and that's how we came up with the advisory panel idea. So I am leaning towards option two, which looks like this charter, except one of our names is hacked off. And wherever it says "advise the commission", we change it to "advise the commissioner".
So this is President Stone. I appreciate what you're saying, and I also appreciate why you want to do it this way. The concern I have is it's not just about chopping it off, right? You know, if you and, let's say, Commissioner, let's say you, Commissioner Di are the member to hold those meetings, if you are then working with Commissioner LaVolsi and also working with Commissioner Parker on this initiative, you've in effect created the committee. So it's not just a matter of the document. It's about how it's, and that's why, and I knew it was, I know it was long, but that's why I talked about how the name of what we call it and how we're referring to it is ultimately kind of irrelevant if it's operating as a policy body, which in effect, you know, if you're having those meetings and then consulting with Commissioner LaVolsi or vice versa, or whoever, my understanding, and DCA Flores can interrupt, because it took a while to untangle this myself. I had a lot of questions. I think we all did in the last meeting. But my understanding is that would be, that would be a committee. DCA Flores, is that correct? For the record, she said yes. Does anyone else, before we just jump back in, does anyone else want to ask a question? Yeah, DCA Flores.
There is a section in San Francisco law about passive meetings that you can all read, Section 67.4. It's in the Admin Code. And I mean, it says, essentially, what a passive meeting body is, is advisory committees or other multi-member bodies created in writing or by the initiative of or otherwise primarily formed or existing to serve as a non-governmental advisor to... dot, 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 a member of a policy body. That's why if there's two of you, then it can't be a passive meeting body. It has to be a committee.
It has to be a committee.
Okay.
Thank you, DCA Flores. Vice President Jedonik.
Yeah, I had a question that was, well, two questions. One is about this committee idea and then another one that's less, that's on a different topic. So I'll do the other one first. But, you know, since the last meeting, we got the legal memo. And also, I appreciate all of the information that all of you provided. It's been very helpful to understand the options. But so since the meeting, we got the legal memo, and it's very useful. But is there a reason why you didn't bring back the draft letter for this meeting?
Because the committee didn't, the advisory panel didn't meet, and the whole point was to get their take on it as well, so.
Oh, so you wanted to have them review it before the commission reviewed it, the draft letter to the board supervisors?
Well, it's been posted. It's been public.
Also, President Stone, point of clarification. We, in the last meeting, the commission also said that we would postpone until, we would postpone that, right? Until, postpone the letter to the supes until we had the analysis? Or are you saying, once we got the analysis, why wasn't it shared with the?
Yeah, I guess my question is, is there a reason why, now that we have the legal memo, we're not discussing whether to approve the letter or not? It's fine if we don't, but I was just curious.
Point of clarification. I can also take the responsibility for that. If you don't mind, Commissioner Di had asked me what I thought about including the letter. I specifically said, I knew that we would have a lot to talk about in this meeting and that it might be too much for us to tackle all of that, or not too much, but that it could be considered maybe too much to tackle. So I can take ownership of that.
Okay, thanks. And then my other question was, and this is to clarify, so it sounds like we're leaning, we're being forced into the option of making this an official committee, you know, which is fine. But I just wanted to clarify, if two people makes, means it would have to be a committee, and then is there another part of our bylaws that say if it's a committee, it has to have three people? So then we?
I was just thinking. So a committee per your bylaws has to have three people. So under the passive meeting rules, there can't be two people that lead a passive meeting body. So that's why there's not a middle option of having two people and have a committee.
One or three.
Yes.
I mean, I should clarify, does it have to have three commissioners or just?
For a committee, per your bylaws, your bylaws say three members.
Okay, so then if it's a committee, there would need to be a third commissioner added?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and point of clarification on that as well, because I meant to state this explicitly. But for example, working with Commissioner Parker on how to work with supervisors on this is also by virtue working as a committee. So that's why I presented option number one, even though I know it is more resources and, you know, I have presented in the past not wanting to use those resources. I wanted to present it as an option because we are kind of already operating that way. Did other people who haven't had the chance do? Commissioner Parker, Commissioner LaVolsi?
No, I would just like to say that I think at this point, given resources, given time, given our schedules, the question for the commission is who's available? Because I think what would transpire if we were to go the route of one commissioner, there would have to be a trade-off between myself and Commissioner Di because there are some times I'm going to be available due to my work schedule. There are some times she's going to be available. So that's not an option. Because our schedules, in order to get the work done within the timeline, one of us is not available that entire time. So at this stage, we should move forward to form a committee. My question is, does a formal committee, can it have a short timeline that it exists?
Yes. A committee can sunset at any time, but I just want you to remember that a committee, everyone on the committee that you're proposing to have this, they have to appear in person. All the rules of the Brown Act apply. So no remote participation. You have to have a 72-hour notice period for agendas. And you also have to give the public an opportunity to comment at your meetings. And so, and that would also mean that the secretary has to attend these meetings. We normally, our office does not normally staff committee meetings, so.
Commissioner Di.
So if we were to have a commission committee and we wanted to include the folks we had invited to be part of this advisory panel, would they not be official members of the committee then? They would just, we could invite them to attend because one of the things we promised them, since they're donating their time, is that they wouldn't have to come in person, right? Because it adds a lot of extra time if they have to come in person. DCA Flores? Because I'm concerned we're creating conditions that this group cannot meet.
Yeah, I'll have to do more research on, or just get more information from my office because your bylaws do not state that, but.
I mean, could we have them all be invited guests as opposed to being on the committee?
Again, I'd have to, you know, I'd have to get more information from my office to determine if these folks are going to be committee members. And if they don't have to be committee members... I don't know. Yeah, I just have to go back and check what is required at this point for guests if they're not part of this committee.
Commissioner LaVolsi, you had your hand up.
It's not a question, it's more of a statement. I think it's obvious that there, that this is falling within some gray area in some ways and how we had first designed it. And so the goal is not to obfuscate the rules, but was really to really make sure that we could get, it is very hard to get a panel like this to come in. As we stated earlier, time is of the essence, and we felt that there would be trust that we would convey the information in a way that would be clear and concise, and then the rest of the commission can make a decision. But I think if we move towards a committee, then we really need to think about the timeline and what's realistic because it's not most likely going to be possible that once you, DCA Flores, have this information, if you come back and say, it has to be in person with everyone involved, then that's going to change the dynamic. And I know that that's just the way it is. But then we would have to think about what are ways that we could pursue this, which is of extreme, I will speak for myself, interest on our parts. And I would just remind us, I was not on the commission when there was the, but I did read and see what was happening. And so our goal is to make sure that we have a redistricting commission that doesn't have political influence.
Yes. So this is President Stone. I haven't really asked questions or shared yet, so if it's okay, I'd like to jump in. I have a bunch of thoughts, and I appreciate the discussion and learning a lot about people's opinions and thoughts on how to proceed. One of the questions that I keep coming back to is why we need this group. It's not that, and what I mean by that is not that why don't we need these individuals? They're phenomenal, obviously, incredible. And many of them have come to present to us over the last year. And so, you know, I guess my question is, if we've had redistricting agendized almost every single meeting for the last year, where we've had these wonderful individuals, members of the community, these good government groups, all come and present to us every single meeting, and we've all listened and discussed and debated for, like I said, about a year now, is there a reason that, you know, we can't, you know, whether it's both Commissioner Di and LaVolsi or one or the other, whatever, just put together the recommendations based on what has already been done over the last year and ask the amazing panelists to come, invite them to speak remotely at a commission meeting based on the recommendation that, you know, perhaps Commissioners LaVolsi and Di put together based on what we've already learned in the last year? I guess that's a part that I'm still not sure about. I guess that's a part that I'm still not sure about. And I'm sure there's a reason why. I just don't fully know what it is. And so I'd love the answer to that. And I think that would also help move us forward, right? If, let's say Commissioners Dai and Lavolci hypothetically offline in the next six weeks, I do, that is not an actual number, I'm just saying, like, you know, I don't want to assume to know your schedules. But let's say, you know, in the next six weeks, you were able to put together recommendations of, based on everything we've heard, and also obviously Commissioner Dai has extensive experience in this area, that then the commission could review that final recommendation and we invite those folks to come and present when you present those recommendations. I guess I'm not sure why that couldn't be potentially, like, why we couldn't do that. And I think one of the reasons why I brought up resources before without wanting to opine at my, opine, is that, the resources of these organizations, is that they have already given their time to us in, over the last year. In addition to that, community, I recall, I wrote down from our past meetings that Commissioner Dai, you had mentioned that you had asked other community groups. I think you specifically mentioned SF Rising. You also mentioned having spoken with members of the African-American community in San Francisco, like, community groups and Latinx communities, and they declined to participate. And so that, I think, kind of stuck with me as to why? Because their resources, you know, thinking about their resources. So that kind of stuck with me, and it's making me think, you know, we have so much information. We've had community groups come and talk. So I'd like to kind of come back to that point. And then there was another question I had that was more of a point of clarification from, for Commissioner Dai, or point of information that I was wondering about. When you said, "Almost there with AB 1248," and what you mean by that? You said, "Help us tweak the last 10%." I wasn't clear on what that meant exactly, so if you could just explain? Because in the last meeting, you had said that the first thing you asked the group to do, and this is quoting, is imagine what it would look like to adopt these bills and what it would mean to strike all the provisions in the charter. And so is that, I guess my question is, is that, are they already working on the recommendations and you want, should be able to meet, to get to the 10%? I think I'm getting confused about what you're referring to when you say that. So I guess it's, A, is the alternative just you and the two commissioners working on it? And B, can you clarify what you mean by 90, 10%?
Okay.
Commissioner Dai?
Sure. So if you recall, I had already put a summary of all the recommendations we've heard from all the speakers back in November. So that's been posted for a long time. There were still open questions, if you recall, that I had, you know, put in the right-hand column that were questions I had, because they're not, the recommendations were not specific enough for San Francisco. And I should point out with, you know, with the exception of the League of Women Voters of San Francisco, all the other ones are state organizations. And they've been looking at legislation like AB 1248 and 764. That could apply to every city in the state of California. And like I said, they're not dealing with things that are specific to San Francisco, like the fact that we have so many supervisors, right? So they have proposed in 1248, a standard, a standard commission, what it should look like and how it should behave and what the rules should be. And a lot of the general recommendations and best practices are consistent with what we've heard, that there's consensus recommendation on. But the parts where we kind of stick out, like the fact that we have so many supervisors, their standard, their standard format, and they may not work that well for us, right? And so that's the last, that's what I mean by the last 10%. That's where I really wanted to get these big brains in a room and have them hash it out, make them think about San Francisco and hash it out with us. Because I do think that will take thoughtful discussion. I, you know, am very aware of the limited time we have at regular commission meetings. And I did not want to impose that burden on the full commission, which is why I suggested a committee in the first place, so that we could hash it out, like, do all of the thinking through this and, you know, give our best recommendation to the full commission with pros and cons, et cetera. So that's the, I think I addressed both of your questions.
Yes, thank you for clarifying. That makes a lot more sense.
So I have a little more information. I got in touch with Brad, Deputy City Attorney Brad Russi. And so he did say that, he confirmed that you can create your committee to do the redistricting work. However, you wouldn't necessarily have this group. Like, you wouldn't say, hey, here's our fierce group to help us. You could invite these folks to the meeting to hear what they have to say, but they wouldn't be part of the committee. Yeah, so they wouldn't be like a body that advises you. You could just invite them to come and share their thoughts. But you can't, you know, you wouldn't invite them to every meeting and have them vote, or like, they have no authority over the committee.
Right, but they could attend.
They could attend like any other, like any other citizen of San Francisco, or resident of San Francisco.
Or a guest speaker.
Yeah. As an invited guest speaker. So, yeah, so really, the whole design of this was to unburden the commission and to let this group of experts kind of do the heavy lifting and think through the last, that's what I meant, the last 10%, the specifics where the standard, you know, the standard form may not work perfectly for San Francisco. So that, you know, so that we can hand it over to the board of supervisors and let them take action before the standard form is forced on us. So that was the thinking.
Thank you for clarifying, Commissioner Dai. I actually think that's really helpful. And might I recommend or ask that, in whatever the next prep, whatever deliverable you put together is also just maybe mentioning that, like, what's been done and saying why it's important? Because I personally didn't remember all of that, so I think it was a helpful reminder. So, thank you. Vice President Jordonik, I think you have your hand up.
Yes, so I've, you know, I've been listening to the discussion. It's, I feel like there's got to be a way to let this group meet to, you know, to come up with the recommendations. But is there also a scenario where these five people could just meet on their own? And then, you know, it seems like they're all interested and then come up with recommendations and then just give them to us? Or is that also a passive meeting body? Or if it doesn't even have any commissioners on it? And then that way, it wouldn't be, you know, you wouldn't have the scheduling conflicts with, between the two of you? Or is that an option?
Possibility. I mean, that would be difficult considering the heavy role that both two commissioners have taken in this group. But any member, any person who lives in San Francisco, or I guess Mr. Turner doesn't live in San Francisco, but anyone that wants to opine on anything about San Francisco, I think, can come to your meeting and do so, like, anyone, right? So these people can all get together and come up with something and say, hey, San Francisco Commission, Elections Commission, this is like a really great idea. We think you should back it. I don't see any issues with that. But I, you know, again, it would be like, if you'd want them to advise you, then that's where the problem is at.
Commissioner Lavolci?
Well, I appreciate, Vice President Jordonik, your suggestion. But this group would be doing this at our behest. Even if we're not there, it's at our behest. So it wouldn't, that would be violating the rules. Because we're asking them to give us best practices for our unique situation in San Francisco based on their knowledge and experience. So it's not a random group coming together. It's a group that we've asked to come together. So I don't think that would help.
Thank you for vocalizing that correctly. That's what I was trying to say. And something like this did happen, I mean, during redistricting, like, on their own, a group of like 100 orgs came together and drafted maps on their own, right? So at this point, there has been a request already by this body. So I think it would be too late to say, hey, go do something on your own.
So there's a phrase for it, but you can't undo the, you've already crossed that line.
Commissioner Lavolci?
So we have to decide, are we going to have a committee? Or are we going to do some of the suggestions that Commissioners, Vice President Stone, excuse me, is suggesting? I mean, I think that's, or you, some of the things you said that we might want to consider, which are, we've come, we've had information that has been brought together. Can we have these members come and provide that information to us directly? Was that not something that you suggested?
Thanks for asking. No, that, what I meant, what, I was asking Commissioner Dai to clarify kind of what the difference would be between what we've already gotten and what the body would be offering. I was just saying, initially, I had said there were three paths, the committee, the passive, and whatever, based on the considerations that we had all elevated over the last several months that I think got us into this entangled process. Did that clarify?
No.
Okay, absolutely. Yeah. Commissioner Parker, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, just before we, just, I mean, I think I know what direction this conversation is heading, but I do just have a clarification question. The passive body option, if there was one commissioner leading that, then does that also, would that mean, because if that was the direction to go, that no longer could that commissioner then be having any conversations with anybody about this? Because it would turn into like a serial meeting, essentially, of some sort?
Yes.
Okay.
It would turn into an unsanctioned committee.
An unsanctioned, hang on. So that would all have, so all conversation would have to take place here. So no coordinating behind the scenes, anything like that. So it's either a committee where people, commissioners can talk to each other about this, or it's, excuse me, one commissioner leading a passive meeting group and then comes back to report back on that to this, the full commission. And that's where the communication happens.
Yeah, that's part of why, sorry, this is President Stone, just to answer that. That's part of why, I know I gave this kind of like long thing, but there are so many of these considerations of like, well, what happens if this? And I, I mean, the amount of questions that I've asked the DCAs about this, trying to re-listen to some of our meetings. Yes, I have a proposal, which we, you know, we can talk about in terms of the things, you know, what we, some of the things we've talked about are individual commissioners' time. So Commissioner Lavolci, Commissioner Dai, both have expressed that, you know, it needs to be a shared, it can't be just one commissioner, understandably. The other thing we've talked about is the commission resources with the secretary and everything associated with that. And then the third are some of these other considerations around numbers of commissioners and who can participate. So I have a proposal that perhaps we consider establishing a committee, a formal committee, that can determine when it meets. So let's say it's Commissioner Dai, Commissioner Parker, and Commissioner Lavolci. But you could maybe meet, you know, once, once, it could be a short-term commi- commission, a committee. It doesn't have to be like, you know, a long-term, it could be a short-term commission. Yeah, where you have a conversation about things you want to do. And that way, you know, you can work offline, you know, Commissioner Parker can go off and work with, and do some of the supervisor things, and then report back to the committee. Commissioners Dai and Lavolci can be responsible for doing whatever offline, or I guess you couldn't because it would be a quorum, so one of you. But have that be. In terms of the resources, you would have to follow the meeting requirements for yourselves. We could, you could invite the other folks to participate remotely as guests to your idea, Commissioner Dai. And then the third component of that be, we can debate this, not have the commission secretary take the minutes and do the agenda at the meeting, but have the committee be responsible for the minutes and the agenda. And, yeah, the minutes and the agenda and the, I think that's it. Now my brain's getting foggy. So that's, that's a, seems like maybe a mix of some of the things. Commissioner Dai?
Yeah, it seems like in order for this to, the burden to be shared, we have to go the committee route. And if that's the direction we're going, I would ask Commissioner Parker if she's willing. And also, we already have a date, which was hard-fought to find another date that all these people could meet. So if we do that, I would ask the commission secretary's assistants in helping us find a room. But.
That's what I was going to say. That date may have to change, because there's a lot of meetings. Is it the next Wednesday? Yeah, there's a lot of Wednesday meetings, so. If you cannot meet at City Hall, then you can't have a meeting, so.
So it has to be City Hall, can't be at any other?
No, that's for passive bodies. For committees, you're essentially like a mini Elections Commission.
And let's let Commissioner Dai finish, and then I'll hand it over to.
Sorry about that.
Go ahead, Commissioner Dai.
Yeah, and then there's the other issue that I'm going to be out of pocket for most of June, so. Which is why I had said offline to Commissioner Lavolci that if it's a passive meeting body, she's going to have to step up. Because I can do one meeting, but I probably can't do them after that.
Vice President Jordonik?
Yeah, I think, I think there's a possibility that, and DCA Flores, you might know, but there's conference rooms that are smaller than the hearing rooms. Well, I think, I know when we had the advisory committee for the open source some years back, we met in the smaller conference rooms. And there's, they're like rooms that are maybe a fifth of the size of this room, or a third. Then those might be more available than like 408 and 400.
So I agree, there, this is a really big building. There might be tons of rooms. But the other thing, you know, you have to post the agenda 72 hours beforehand. So, you know, if you miss that deadline, you can't meet.
Commissioner Dai?
So I don't think the agenda is the issue. And we can meet in a closet, because there's only going to be three of us. Everyone else is going to be remote. So it's just an issue of whatever requirements there are to record or livestream the meeting?
Yeah, you have to livestream the meeting. And you can't meet in a closet, because the public is not going to be able to fit in a closet. So, so it has to be a room accessible to the public.
Vice President Jordonik, or Commissioner Lavolci had her hand up.
I was just going to say, Commissioner Dai, the technology, and to Commissioner, Vice President Jordonik, the technology piece might not be available in the other conferences, conference rooms of streaming the meeting. You know, I don't know what conference rooms you're talking about, but it sounds like all of the technology that we would need, especially if the secretary is not going to be available, would be in a room like this and not in any other of the conference rooms.
Point of clarification, we might be able to help with that. We might be able to, meaning like, if it's a small room, you could set up a WebEx, you know, we could help set up a WebEx. And you could just do it on one of your computers pretty easily. Vice President Jordonik?
Yeah, that's actually what I was going to say. I was going to say, as long as you have a laptop in the room, you could just put it in the center and then people can hear you and you could.
Okay, that's doable.
So it seemed, President Stone here, it seems like really the, the big thing is just ensuring that you could get a space in City Hall for next Tuesday.
And we would appreciate help with that.
Oh, yeah. Commissioner, Commissioner Lavolci, sorry.
I think before we move forward or have any other discussions, there's a proposal for a committee, but we haven't, I don't think we've given Commissioner Parker time to think and consider this proposal. So I think we should maybe allow time for Commissioner Parker to decide that. And I'm assuming you don't want to just decide that right now. To be fair to you.
Commissioner Parker?
Thank you. I appreciate that. I mean, I wasn't sure how all of this was going to go, go down. The main, I mean, as with everybody else, you know, the question is. The, the main, I mean, as with everybody else, you know, the question is always with capacity. And so my question for you all would be, is, is how often would we want to meet? Some of you know, I'm on my chair, a couple of other things that are all winding down in the next month or two. And so I'm, you know, finishing those things up. If there's not a lot of meetings related, you know, if there's a couple of meetings, I can probably do that. I will be in town. Those, that, that is possible. But if it was something like, we're wanting to meet, you know, weekly for a period of time, like that might be challenging for me to be a part of. And majority for a committee would be two. And so if there's one I couldn't attend, then so be it, you know?
Yeah, exactly.
But otherwise, I'm, I mean, obviously trying to help in ways that are appropriate and that I can. And so.
Is that what you got? Commissioner Di.
Yeah, so, so I, like I said, I'm gonna be absent for most of June. So two out of three of us would have to be available. And then I, I wonder if it would be helpful for everyone if you would just share the update, you know, that you, you've been working with our potential legislative champions. And maybe it's appropriate just to share where the progress is on that and.
Do you want me to share that? I mean, do you want to, I, I don't know if you wanted to consider this, this question right now about committee? Or if you want, I mean, I'm happy to share some updates on conversations. Whatever's appropriate for the order of things.
I'm open to what the body wants. One thing I would also like to note, just as an aside, which may be more of a question that I would want to pose to the committee if it's formed, is also, you know, I shared a little bit about the, what's happening with the Assembly Bill. But I think it would be helpful to also understand the, the approach to this, the Assembly Bill, like how the commission is thinking about that. And whether some of this should wait until, you know, the legislative session has gone through. Obviously, maybe not the letter in support. But if that passes, if it won't pass, kind of what's the process of that? I think that would be a helpful, just keeping an eye on what's happening with that legislative path. I mean, I was looking, I was quite literally looking at the legislative path earlier today and reading some of the differences. And there are so many steps that it would have to go through. But just keeping an eye on it at the state, in addition to the, the local kind of work with the electeds would be great. So, but otherwise I'm open. I want to hear what others people think about talking, hearing the update. I'd be interested to hear the update. Vice President Jordonik, Lavossi.
Yes.
Commissioner Parker, please, go ahead.
Yeah, so as I shared last month, I've had some conversations with Supervisor Mirna Melgar and Supervisor Matt Dorsey. We, we know that President Aaron Peskin is interested and willing to be a sponsor. And, and both supervisors, Dorsey and Melgar, are also willing. There, there is some discussion about who will be the lead because they want to make sure that they are not standing alone because they all have a lot on their plates, but they are all supportive. And so I think, I'm feeling there's still some final, I think, conversations that need to happen there. But in general, there is support for this and willingness to move forward, especially if it's done as a team. They are all super supportive of the idea that we move this forward in whatever it looks like. Because we don't know what the actual measure will look like yet, even though we have some general ideas at the broad strokes. They are interested with the, the strategy that we've talked about before, about trying to get all of the supervisors on board. Because that just, by doing the heavy lifting now, it's a lighter lift for everyone later. And then also the mayor, and I have had some initial conversation with the mayor's office as well to try to bring them along and let them know what's happening, what's coming forward, to ask for also advice and questions and things that they might have. So that again, we're starting to lay groundwork, even though we don't know the specifics yet, that everybody feels included in the process. So that there's more likely a strong foundation of support whenever it actually comes to fruition. So I would say those are all generally moving in a good direction. And that that is a good approach for us to continue to take, is to bring everybody along with and ask for questions and suggestions along the way so that it has a better chance of success. And we all are not having to worry too much by the time it actually makes it to the ballot. So.
Thanks, Commissioner Parker. I move that we form a redistricting initiative committee that will follow the bylaws, Public Brown Act, Sunshine, all the public meeting requirements. But seek to use its own resources to actually establish meetings and minutes, agendas. Those are details of the motion. But work on its own independently and find a, yeah, work on its own independently. And it can be a short-term committee as well. So the motion, let me just restate it more clearly, is to establish a formal committee that operates independently. And then we'll provide updates to the commission based on its, its progress, follow all appropriate laws.
I have a question, a point of clarification. Is there an option to have the secretary available? Or is it, you would prefer that we, the secretary is never available for this committee meeting, if this committee meets?
The idea was that we had discussed as a group, the use of the resources of the secretary. I mean, as it stands right now, full transparency, Secretary Davis is already working at full capacity. And so that would mean it would pull some resources. So perhaps maybe we try without, and if it's becoming too much, we can talk about reallocating some resources. But I'm open, open to the conversation, but full transparency, yes. Secretary Davis is already working at full capacity of her hours. Vice President Jordonik.
Yeah, just one question. Is there a proposed name for the committee?
Fierce.
Oh, Fierce, okay.
I was gonna be so sad if we couldn't use it.
Fierce Committee or, or Fierce.
Redistricting Initiative Committee.
I don't, yeah, I don't, well, that's, you're saying it twice, right?
Let's just call it the Fierce Committee.
Okay.
I mean, Commissioners Di, Lavossi and Parker, do you like that? You're the potential members of the committee, so.
Zero opinion.
So I think we need a second and then once.
Yes, of course.
Once you have that going, the president formally appoints the members. So you don't vote on who's gonna be on the committee. The, the president's duty is to appoint the members and to appoint a chair of the committee.
The, the motion though is about forming the committee. So I just wanted to make sure before, if I need to amend the motion, it sounds like Fierce is, the motion is to establish the Fierce Committee. The president will appoint members as per the conversation. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Parker. So let's take.
Public comment.
Yeah, I was just about to say, so let's take public comment.
No one will know what that means. That's the only concern.
See any public comment? Hands raised. Great. Okay, Secretary Davis, would you mind calling the roll call vote for the motion to establish the Fierce Committee?
President Stone.
Yes.
Vice President Jordonik.
Yes, I feel like I have to roar or something. Yes.
Commissioner Di.
Aye, but only because we retain the Fierce name.
Commissioner Lavossi?
Yes.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Both.
Great. Thank you, Secretary Davis, and thank you all. I know this is a difficult conversation. And I also just really appreciate Commissioners Di and Lavossi and their patience. And hopefully they're open-minded and definitely not seeking to be obstructionist. I want to make sure that, follow the law. And I feel really excited to hear what comes out of all of the work that you all do together. So with that, let's move to, let's close agenda item, oh, actually, were there any other comments, questions or anything else? Okay. We'll close agenda item number, yeah, DCFers. No, but it doesn't, where does it say that we have to do that right now? Do we have to do it right now?
No. Your discretion is fresh.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Yeah, we have to decide who can do it.
Yeah. Okay, cool. So we're gonna close agenda item seven. We're gonna move to agenda item eight, number eight, agenda items for future meetings. A discussion and possible action regarding, regarding items for future agendas. So Commissioner Di had asked specifically about this, about the June meeting, so I will hand it to her.
Yes, I would like to participate in the June meeting if it is possible for us to reschedule it to the last week of June. So if, if the commission is open to it, and if not, I understand.
I have a question.
Yeah, Commissioner Lavossi.
So we're talking about the 28th of June?
Or.
Or the 21st?
No, it would be the, it would be.
Oh, that would be a regular meeting.
After the 23rd, yeah.
Okay.
And, yeah, so it doesn't have to be any particular day. But if there's a day that most of us can make it, then.
Oh, sorry, Vice President Jordonik.
I, I can make any day that week.
Okay. Commissioner Parker.
Yeah, I, I believe that I will be around, I will be available. And frankly, when I look at my calendar, that might, if we did the 20th, might even work better for me because I have a big work thing that, on the 21st in the afternoon, that might build, you know, bring me right up next to our meeting time. So.
Okay. Commissioner Lavossi, did you have any?
I am available the week of the 26th either. The only date that I can't meet is the 29th.
Great. So, thank you. I, I believe I can do the 28th. I, obviously, we need to get the input of Commissioners Hayden Crowley and Commissioner Bernhard Holtz. But given that they're not present, I think we can probably move forward with that. I will look into it. Personally, I, I would love to keep it on a Wednesday, just for continuity, if everyone is okay with that, of our regular meetings, and that way it's only such a week. So I will look into that, Secretary Davis, I'll look into that and get back to folks. Hit me now. The other thing I wanted to mention is that in lieu of one of our meetings this summer, we will do the retreat, but that means either maybe our July or August meeting, we won't meet. So folks can keep that in the back of their mind and we can talk about that at the next meeting as well. Is there anything else folks would like to include? Okay. It is 9:38 PM.
Look, public comment.
Oh, I was so close. And now we'll move to public comment. I have the gavel in the hand.
There are no hands raised to public comment.
Great. Closing agenda item eight. And now it is 9:38 still, and this meeting is adjourned.